By a moment of silence.
My name is Jesus, is God, and in the Republic of America, and to the Republic of Kansas, one nation and one law, and use the rule of justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, this time we will have public and employee comment. Please, you have three minutes, please state your name and address. And for those of you online, I will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. So first, we have Ms. Lily Brown.
Good evening, Superintendent Benson and members of board. My name is Lily Brown, and I'm here this evening to ask you to put into action a plan to clear the waiting list for students that are asking to return to in-person instruction. As you're probably aware, on March nineteenth of this year, the CDC revised their physical distancing recommendations to reflect at least three feet between students in classrooms. So this leads me to believe it's reasonable that there may be more room available in classrooms to accommodate the students that are on the waiting list. In my case, I have a kindergartner who was on the waiting list at Sealston Elementary School, and I'd liked him to return to school for the remainder of this school year. Last month was the Virginia School Boards Association Equity and Education Month, where the promise of public education for every student, every child, to be successful in school and in life was highlighted on the Certificate of Recognition. And so I'm asking for that for my child and for any other students that are on the waiting list to receive the in-person instruction. I spent some time today talking to the deputy, I believe she was the deputy clerk of the Spotsylvania County School Board, and she shared with me that in their decision to have students return four days a week, they were updated by the Rappahannock Health Board, and that they were very, very encouraging in stating that students are safe to return to schools. And so that factored largely into their decision to now, I believe, April twelfth, they will be having four-day weeks, four days a week for their students. So I thought that was, that was very encouraging for us. So I want to finish by saying that I think it's time to focus on the encouraging information in research that has been put forth during this COVID- nineteen pandemic. And one of the encouraging, some of the encouraging information that's come out through research is that it's safe to return to school. So I hope you'll consider my points, mainly being that the students that are on the waiting list, please be given the opportunity to attend classes through the end of the year. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next up, Ms. Dee Strauss.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dee Strauss at one zero three six two Ridgeway Drive here in King George. I have some great news for you. King George DECA was all-in as they head for the next level. King George High School DECA Chapter was all-in for the DECA State Leadership Conference, held virtually March third through the seventh. Countless hours of meetings, events, activities, preparation, and practice really paid off with certificates, medals, and trophies awarded to King George DECA. DECA is a career and technical education student-run organization that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. King George DECA joined over two thousand students and advisors from all over the state at this virtual event. KG DECA fielded a delegation of twenty-nine students who competed in nineteen different events from project management to team to entrepreneurship to principals to fundamental events. King George DECA was recognized for their activities at Virginia DECA Day and participation in the National DECA Chapter Campaigns. Students participated via videos. They prepared in response to event situations and case studies, video presentations of their projects and idea pitches, and personal selling videos. Not only did they practice their presentation skills, but they also had to practice how to create their best video in one take with no editing. Disqualified if you did that. Many people from the King George County area acted as judges. Special thanks to those folks who helped us out. There were many of them, and I don't have all of the names, so I don't want to not list everyone. Friday night's opening session, King George DECA received Blue Chip Award for the chapter's annual report, highest level to reach. They also received largest chapter in Region Three Award, Star Chapter, Superstar Chapter, and Platinum Chapter Awards for Membership. Lauren Wenzel received a plaque and was recognized for District Nineteen President. Troy Spillman was recognized for his work as a state officer this year and as a state officer candidate for next school year. Mr. David Buddy Miller and his wife Julie Randall Miller were recognized as Friends of Virginia DECA for their continued support as KG DECA alumni, judges, and chaperones of this chapter for fifteen years. On Saturday, the following students were recognized for top score in tests, Max Freitag, Graham Patterson, Troy Spillman, and Brandon Thurman. On Sunday, Anthony Means and Alina Puentez were awarded School-Based Enterprise Plaque for Gold Recertification for our school store, and Jesse Wang won the Dominion Power Scholarship. Troy Spillman was elected to the state officer team for next year. At the grand awards, Graham Patterson and Troy Spillman won first place in Business Law and Ethics, Jesse Wang won fourth place in Independent Business Plan, and Lauren Wenzel won seventh place in, 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 ah, one word, International Business Plan. Thank you all for always supporting these students. I'm sorry it took longer.
Thank you. All right. Next, Mr. Brandon Haga.
Excuse me, ma'am. Before I get started, I got a comment that's going to go about three minutes right to the T. Now, I'd just like to transition over to my daughter, if she's comfortable saying something. If that's okay. All in all, it'll take about four minutes total.
Okay, certainly.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Brandon Haga. Ma'am, actually, you represent my district, for the record. Good evening. I would like to introduce you, my two daughters, Bree and Bren, and my son Brock. We are here today for two primary reasons. Number one, to give gratitude where gratitude is due, and number two, to allow my kids to see the answers behind their whys and to look failure in the face. First off, Ms. Pincera and Mr. Collins, on behalf of this community and our family, we are forever grateful for your resilience, effort, and continuous pursuit to get our children back in school as fast as possible. Although you're attempting to hold Dr. Benson and his staff accountable, you are unfortunately outnumbered by your fellow fearful and passive board members, and sadly, a very, very small percentage of teachers who place themselves over the very kids they're responsible for educating. Through all of that, neither of you wavered, and I salute both of you for upholding your promises to community and fighting for our youth. So thank you. Let me be clear with my next statement. This is not a personal attack to any of you all. I am confident you are all great people outside of this setting, and I have full respect for all of y'all. But with that, Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Hawke, Ms. Tolliver, and Dr. Benson, please take a long, hard look at these kids that stand before you. Each of you individually fell down, and hundreds more like them in this community. In my seventeen years in military, I've seen the good and the bad of leadership, and you four rank right up there with the worst of them. When COVID struck over a year ago, a number of things were exposed in this country. The first was our medical community's lack of capacity to handle such crisis. The second is how unhealthy we are as a nation, and finally, exposure of good and bad leadership on all levels. Unfortunately, for this board and superintendent, your lack of leadership was uncovered and has yet to recover. Every school district in this country was punched right in the face last March. This one was no different. However, the school districts that had true leaders sit in the very seats you sit in got up off the mat and went back to work in the ring fighting COVID head-on. Their motivation was kids and education first. Because of that, they had kids in seats since the fall with support of their staffs and communities. In the case of King George County Schools, you guys are still on a knee, waiting for the final bell to ring to save you from having to fight. Dr. Benson, sir, we didn't ask you to get perfect. We didn't expect you to get it perfect. But you were expected to meet the need of every single kid under your watch. In your own words, you state, "King George County Schools are committed to provide an academically rigorous educational system." Sir, today, my twelve-year-old daughter entered school for the first time in over a year, and sadly, she received three hours of instruction. One hour was PT, and she left there fed with a pop tart and a thing of milk, all day. That's unacceptable. She received twelve total hours this week. That's complete and total failure. What you're doing, what this board is allowed, is nothing. I'm almost finished. I'm almost there. Hang on. As I've said before, all of you directly or indirectly responsible for the scars the kids in this community have received, the COVID excuse is long gone and should have given gone long months, months ago. With that, I am confident that each of you will be held accountable by this community, and this board will look completely different when your time is up. Ms. Pincera, Mr. Collins, thank you again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Haga.
Hi, my name is Breland, and I just want to say that I think we should get back in school all the way, five days a week, and for the normal amount of hours. And for me and my friends and other people I know, it's harder to learn virtually. I think we should be back in school for even at least four days in person. It's not good for our social and mental health to only socialize with the people we live with. It's been hard for me and much harder for others who do not have the family support I have. This whole pandemic has been hard for everyone to get used to, but the least you guys can do is get us back in school. And thank you to the school board members who do want us back in school. And to the ones who don't want us to go back, you really aren't helping anything keeping us from going to school, except increasing depression and anxiety rates, along with other mental health conditions. I just feel bad that you all, not the ones who want us back, that you all don't see that you may be helping spread germs a little bit, but actually making a lot of things worse in the process. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Vance, do we have any public comment online? One.
Brian Greggen, King George, Virginia. And first of all, I want to state that I echo or I agree with Mr. Haga's comments completely. That was amazing, and it's hard to follow those comments. And all I'm calling for today is to request that the waiting list be cleared, and those children are allowed to go back to in-person education. I understand that efforts have been made to keep the, the schools at a minimum for in-person, but I think that the time has come with the PPE, the Plexiglas, the Ionization System, the fully vaccinated teachers and staff, and the, the, the all-moving metrics, I think are in a pretty good spot to add some additional students to the classrooms. I don't, I don't see why that's such an issue. The, the, the citizens of King George that have wanted in-person education have been deprived of that for a long time, and enough excuses. Just clear the waiting list, and then let's get ready for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greggen. I believe that concludes public comment. Mr. Vance, was that it? Okay, thank you. All right. So at this time, we will move on to our discussion item, the FY twenty-two budget. Dr. Benson?
Can we spend a second with the waiting list?
So we're here this evening to discuss the budget.
I get that, but you had three speakers spoke of the waiting list.
Understood.
There is no board comment.
Okay, so how about we discuss that at our next meeting, put it on the agenda?
Can't hear you.
I know. Can we make a change to tonight's agenda so that we could add the discussion of trying to eliminate?
This is a special meeting.
So the
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to add the discussion on trying, doing something that we can eliminate the waiting list.
Second.
Any discussion?
May I ask what, because I don't know what Robert's Rules and our potential bylaws have to say about special meetings.
I don't think either one has been adopted, so I wonder that we have anything that states that. We kind of cannot do what the board
Well, I understand. I was just asking for content.
Ms. Oliver, any comment?
So I would like to say I do believe we should discuss the waiting list. I'm also concerned about that, but this evening, the purpose of our special meeting was to discuss the budget, and considering in a previous meeting we did review the policy that Dr. Benson put together that was what informed the waitlist, I think it would be prudent, instead of discussing it this evening, to bring it back for consideration by the board potentially on Monday's meeting.
We're all here. I don't know why it would be any different, why we can talk about it now as opposed to later. It's just yet again kicking the can down the road.
Okay, so
Said that we are trying with your bylaws, with the bylaws committee, to move toward protocol and appropriate protocol. So I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of where would this be if your bylaws were in place?
Bylaws are not in place. Robert's Rules are not in place. You
I have a question, Mr. Collins.
And just, just let me, it's not my bylaws. So we formed a committee, you know, and we all put input into the, into the bylaws that was very equally dispersed among the six, seven of us, eight of us that did it, seven of us that did it. So, um, you know, that's supposed to be on the agenda for our next regular meeting. So at that time, I guess we could discuss it.
Okay, so I think that sounds like the bylaws will be discussed. So at this point, we could vote on adding the discussion of the waitlist to this evening's agenda. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Turn votes nay. Motion is lost. So
So, Madam Chair,
Ms. to Collins.
Can we discuss, make a motion to discuss the, on April fourteenth opening? It's a motion. All students back to school.
Where does April fourteenth come from?
What is it? It's the day after April thirteenth.
Yeah, and why April fourteenth?
April twelfth is when the Spatsy is returning to four days a week full-time. So I believe Mr. Collins is trying to say he'd like to make a motion
I did.
to open schools four days a week, beginning, full days, four full days, beginning April twelfth, as our predecessors or surrounding communities are doing.
Many are not doing that.
All right, so is there a second? All right, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
So in the past, we have, we, we were, in August, we had a plan that we were going to come back to school with a hybrid, and we decided that we weren't going to do that because Spatsy and Stafford, primarily those two communities, were not going to go back to school. So we didn't go back to school. So now we have these communities that are, are actually going back to school, they're doing more than a hybrid, and, you know, we're just trying to make the recommendation that we will follow suit as we follow suit in August.
Any further discussion?
Yes. So, you know, the, the President of the United States wants us to get back to school. The CDC wants us to get back to school. Our neighbors are going back to school. We have tons of mitigation. We have room. And so I think we need to not kick the can down the road and go back to school. I mean, you can, you can do it next meeting and say same thing as you could this meeting. It's either yes or no.
I think the sooner we vote towards that, the sooner we give the staff time to prepare.
Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Oliver?
Is reopening or returning to inlearn instruction on the agenda for Monday night? As a discussion, for next Monday night?
I do, not at this time.
But it could be added.
Could be added.
I'm just not sure right now, tonight, what a further discussion of any of that is going to do, except for people to share their opinions, and we have no further information than we had at our last meeting. And I disagree that all the surrounding counties, we are more back in school right now than many divisions neighboring us.
Could you name one of those, please?
Fredericksburg, Stafford,
They're all on the hybrid.
Caroline.
They're on the hybrid and actually going to four days.
Well, we're hybrid and going four days as well.
That's, that's the point. That's, we're not, we are not going four days. You just said we're going four days as well, but we have nothing on the board that says that we're going four days. That's what we're trying to do.
Are high schools back in school four days a week?
Our elementary school students are in school four days a week.
Not the whole school, K through twelve. We're trying to get everybody K through twelve going back four days a week.
Okay. Ms. Hawke?
Yes, ma'am. I am very much in favor, and I want to thank Mr. Haga especially, and his daughter for speaking very appropriately. It's hard not to feel disrespected when he says we failed the children, but I understand his points. I'm very much in favor of having our children return in as appropriate and orderly manner as we can. The question is, at this point, whether we discuss it tonight or next Monday night, in my head. We are not prepared to discuss it, and it certainly, at this point, more than a yes or no question. It depends on information from the schools as to three-foot distancing, the, the, the bus situation, and whether that can be resolved. Whether there are ample teachers to teach all classrooms who are willing to do so. I, I think it is appropriate to say that we'd like to have it. I, I think it's appropriate to say that I would like to have it on the agenda for next Monday with information from the sources, the administrators, the so, so many moving parts to this. But yes, we need to know whether it is feasible, whether it is possible for us to abide by the three-foot distance, which is still in place, and, and what the requirement is for buses. Those, those two issues are, I think, of primary concern, as well as having students who are waitlisted and how they would impact the numbers in the classrooms. We have proceeded in an orderly manner. We have had children phasing back in appropriately, as have our brother and sister school districts. And I think to rush into something with an emotionally-based vote is not the thing to do right now. I think by next Monday, we can have more information, and I would like to see it on the agenda for next Monday.
Thank you, Ms. Hawke. So I would, I would like to state I agree with Ms. Hawke that this evening is not the time nor place to discuss that. I would also like to reiterate that at the la, our last meetings, few meetings, we have discussed this, and we, as a result, Dr. Benson did have the administrators return to us with additional thought being placed into what that would look like, and the feedback was that, at this point in the school year, the appropriate course of action is to focus on next fall, which we also hear from all of our constituents and family members and parents, that we would like to know what the plan is for the fall. So I think it is more prudent to abide by what was recommended to us by our administrators and not try to rearrange the plans that are previously presented and approved and focus on our long-term goal, which is, yes, getting all students back in the building. So that is what I say. Any additional comments?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
So, I think it's ridiculous to drag the administrators in again to tell you the same thing they've told us for an entire year. You, I sat here and listened to them say that, that they're ready to open. That's what they said. I can go back to the tapes and bring it in for you. The waitlist is absolutely ridiculous. For anybody in the United States of America and to go into schools, to be on a waitlist when you are paying taxes to this county for that service, I find that utterly ridiculous. And as far as an emotional thing, this has nothing to do with emotions. This has to do with facts. The way in the facts, getting the kids back to school. You know, it's not, it's definitely not an emotional for me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Collins. Ms. Hawke?
May I ask, as a point of discussion, may I state that the CDC still has the three-foot distancing requirement. It is still in place. And in some cases, I understand from, from my reading of, of the CDC papers, is that in some places, in some considerations, there are a six-foot distance still in place. So I, I think we cannot disregard information from either the CDC or the state, the Virginia State Governor's Office.
So the six-foot is not at all in play according to the CDC. And that the three-foot is a suggestive model without mitigation. So we have tons of mitigation. So to suggest that, plus we have, I went, I went to the schools today. We have room.
Okay.
So I, I do have
Yeah, Ms. Pincera, go ahead.
So as, as far as, I believe, Ms. Hawke, you mentioned the feasibility. I don't understand how we would not have the feasibility when other jurisdictions have the feasibility. So I don't question that there's not the feasibility there. Also, you know, I, I visited the schools back in November, and a lot of the schools, or several of the, the classrooms were set up at six feet. So I do believe that with the CDC guidelines, which is specific for schools to reduce that to three feet, that we will have the probability of being able to at least get these children off of the waiting list. I think that's, that's, you know, first and foremost important. You know, and as far as feelings, I, I don't think there's any feelings involved in the decision, and there should never be any feelings. We should not make any decisions on our feelings, but we should make it based on facts and based on the will of the people that have put us up here. And I think it's been clear in the last few months that children need to be back to school as much as possible for their social and mental well-being, as we've even had the governor, the president, and Mrs. Ransone had even sent us all a letter stating that we need to get these kids back in school at the greatest capacity as possible, as soon as possible.
Okay, so I would like to remind us that there is a motion on the table, the wa, not regarding the waitlist, which will be discussed at next week's meeting, but I was wondering if we could get, someone could repeat the motion as it was stated. So it was a motion to return to school four days a week on April fourteenth?
April twelfth.
Mr. Collins?
amend the motion to the twelfth.
Okay, April twelfth. Any additional details to be included in the motion? That's a little bit open-ended.
K through twelve, full days, four full days for K through twelve.
So I have a comment.
Ms. Oliver?
So what's feasible in other counties doesn't necessarily make it feasible here. I don't think anyone disagrees that we don't want as many kids back in school as possible. I don't think anyone disagrees that we need to cut this waitlist, but as you heard Ms. Harris say two weeks ago, that's the goal. Every, every step's being taken to attempt to get all those kids back in school as soon as possible, and they're working on that. But I, I don't know But I, I don't know that discussing this further, like, we might not have the resources that another county has. We don't know that. And secondary schools just returned today. So can we at least give them the week to determine how that's going, what it looks like? We also have commitments to teachers to remain virtual and, and to students remain virtual that chose that option. So I don't think we can just blanketly say in, in less than a month, we're going to send everybody back. And we don't know what our resources are. We don't know what some of the community want, chooses to remain virtual. So we have to appease that population as well. So those are my comments.
So I, I don't think that the motion, I guess we need to verify or that the motion was not to take away virtual learning. I don't think that's ever been the motion. I think it's, you know.
It was Mr. Collins' motion.
Mr. Collins, would you like to please restate the motion clearly?
I thought it was pretty clear to return all students back to school by April 12th.
Does that include?
Having a virtual option.
Well, according to the governors, we had to afford virtual.
That's correct.
So it had, you are, you are moving that we offer both full virtual and full in-person?
My motion was to return all students back April 12th and we're required to have the option for virtual, whatever that may consist of.
Okay. So a motion to return to school four full days a week on April 12th for K through 12 while maintaining a 100% virtual option.
Correct.
All right. May I add one additional, not to the motion, but for a point for consideration? Instead of voting on it this evening, how about we follow Ms. Hawk's recommendation earlier to discuss this further at the, our next regular meeting, which would be next Monday, which was previously discussed.
So what additional information would you be requiring?
Certainly.
Research from where and by whom?
Mr. Vance, is Dr. Benson's mic on?
Just give him a microphone.
Is your little button turned off?
It's on now, John. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So with all due respect to, to multiple perspectives, I guess when the want for additional information, I really, I, I like to distill this down to, there's really one very basic decision to be made. If we want to allow more children into the school to access in-person learning and understanding that the bulk of the stressor in terms of class size, maintaining a three-foot distance with mask and just for our, our public, the plans developed and implemented several weeks ago at the elementary school were based on three-feet, three-foot distancing with masks, not six-foot. That was made very clear as the principals presented their plans. So the, the plan we have in place already utilizes the three-foot distancing with masks that the CDC just recently endorsed. That said, to, to, to limit or do away with the waiting list would be great. To do so, in many cases, it will simply then require us to relax the three-foot distancing down below three feet, which is really the, the basic, and I think we ended last week's discussion in the same way. When you distill it down, the one variable that requires any cohorting or any staggering, any splitting of students is the distancing requirement. If this board were to determine that they were willing to go below that distancing, then of course, we would then have additional room in the classrooms. So I just want to set expectations that next week, if you host a discussion on that, that is your question. That is really the only question that is going to need to be answered in terms of all of the other things that you are, are advocating for in terms of an increase or status quo as we sit today. So I really think that's, that frames it for you. I don't mean that as a, to be curt or anything. That's really the aspect that needs to be looked at is if we put more kids in a classroom, and I'm speaking of the elementary schools. I think the middle school, we've accommodated everybody who chose in-person learning. I think at the high school, we've accommodated everybody who chose. You know, there's no, that I know of, there's no folks that are, are not able to access in-person learning in grades seven through 12. So the issue really relies with kindergarten to sixth grade. And in that case, you heard from Ms. Harris when she came, I, I think she laid out class sizes for you with the schedule for each of the schools and the grade levels. You would simply need to be willing to allow then us to place more students in any classroom at any given time to augment what we are already providing.
The smallest school is Potomac Elementary. I was there today and I went through the entire school. So if you maintained a three-foot distance, you still would have plenty of room for more students. I, I've observed it myself. So you, if you put.
I also went to several of the schools, all of the schools back in November, and there were several rooms that were beyond the three-foot. Some of them were even able to maintain the six-foot. I think that the driving factor has always been the 15, limiting the class size to the 15 and in some cases 11 at Potomac. Because you can't just say we're going to limit the class size at 15 when the class sizes are drastically different.
So it sounds to me like we're arguing a bit of the same point. So we want to reduce the waitlist and Dr. Benson says we can do that by relaxing the three-foot guidance at the elementary school level. And beyond that, it sounds like those who have chosen in-person instruction at this point in time have been accommodated at the other school level. So it seems to me, to Mr. Dr. Benson's point, that's the question. So I would ask, would we, do we want to vote on the motion that was pre- that is currently on the table? Or Mr. Collins, are you interested in amending or rescinding that based on the discussion from Dr. Benson about what the root of the decision really is?
So I am, I'm not sure where you're driving to a specific issue or want something.
So if we, so if we vote to send kids back four days a week, so perhaps, you know, we get, we've been told that there are additional families that would choose to send their children back. But the, but in order to do so, the, what Dr. Benson is saying is that in order for us to allow it, so when we vote on that, we're voting to relax the three-foot distance and that's ultimately the, that's the ultimate decision point. That's how we've gotten into this situation with the pandemic is that the recommendation is physical distancing inside school rooms. So Dr. Benson's point is really that the, the question before us is, are we as a board willing to relax the three-foot distance in order to accommodate additional students? So it sounds like that's the yes or no question versus, so if we, if we do that, then I suppose.
With all due respect, you've just called Mr. Collins and myself liars because we both have been there. Ms. Oliver, have you been to the schools? Ms. Gonzalez, have you been to the schools? Have you been into the schools? Have you seen, have you taken the tape measure out? Excuse me, I'm talking. I think I have the right to talk, you know? Okay, so, and I do believe that, you know, if you go and you look, there is room that we could make in I, in these schools. So by just sitting here, now you've taken something else off of the table that we've already talked about and diverting it into another discussion and I, I don't think that's the proper thing to do.
All right. So that being said, let's take a vote on the motion since that is the interest. So the motion at this point in time is to return to school four days a week on April 12th for K through 12 while maintaining 100% virtual option. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes nay. Motion is lost. This time we'll move on to our FY22 budget discussion item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate you convening this evening for a special meeting. As you know, there has been, there's been significant action taken at the General Assembly with regard as to the state budget. And that then has a, an impact on local school divisions budgets. So what I have brought to you this evening is a, a second draft of a proposed budget for fiscal year 22. This projected draft or this draft includes a couple of key changes that I just want to present to you in summary information, in summary form. First, as you know, the, the General Assembly had a conference between the two houses has proposed and has provided funding for a 5% increase for teacher salaries. That revenue then, of course, is, is included in our new cap sheet. We all know that the funding formula in Virginia or the scheme that is used to fund schools is a partnership between state revenue and local revenue. So all said, for our public, whenever there is an increase in state revenue for a specified purpose, there is an implied local match to make that initiative whole. So I have adjusted our local school division proposed budget to adopt the 5% increase that the state has provided funding for. So you will see the difference in the compensation amount. And I'm speaking from the executive summary. So John, I don't know if you, you've got the difference in revenue up there, it looks like for the public to see. You'll see between the first draft and the second draft, there is roughly 800,000 more in state revenue for our, for the purpose of our budget. Can you go to the next slide, please, John?
So the, the state, are they giving 2.5% for SOQ or are they giving 5% for SOQ?
5% on the state scale according to SOQs.
SOQ. So how many, how, how much money would be the local match for the, the folks that aren't SOQ?
I'd have to go back and calculate that. I can try to find that out. That would be a, and just for, for those that are listening, what Mr. Collins is talking about is the, the calculation sheet used to calculate funding for each local school division will take a specified number of positions the state uses in their formula per school division, which is based on a, on a number of pupils. That number is, is for every school division. That number is, is quite low. Is, if we were to only fund the SOQ predicated positions, we'd have class sizes well into the 30s, maybe 40s. You know, so that, that is, that's illustrative of the, of the, the way the state funds. So you are correct, Mr. Collins, that the, the additional revenue is based on the number of teachers and the teacher, the median teacher salary that the state uses to calculate the additional revenue. To calculate the inverse, in other words, those positions that are, are in excess of the SOQs and then to further delineate just local funding, what it would cost in local funding for those undesigned positions would take me a little time to calculate. I have to work with Ms. Williams.
I, I asked the last time we were, we met for those numbers.
I don't recollect for that specific task, but I apologize if you did. But we would have to do some calculating for that.
My, my question perhaps to in, in follow-up there is, did you calculate increases for our staff with a 5% for all staff, not just SOQ?
Yes, ma'am. For, for every employee, the new proposed budget includes a 5% increase for employees. It also includes a, a employer portion of the, which is, which is half of about 3.75. The employer pro- portion of the increase in costs for the health insurance premium, for which we were notified a week or so ago.
Right. But then to Mr. Collins' point, it will basically cost us more local money to fund the, the non-SOQ positions up to 5%, but we are doing it anyway.
We're proposing that, but it will also cost us local money to do that for the SOQ positions.
So I'm sure that question, I'm sorry, Dr. Benson.
But it would cost us more for the non-SOQ than the SOQ? Or am I confused?
Let me make sure I understand the question. So the, there are a number of SOQ positions. Let's say for just ease of numbers, there are 100 teacher positions in the SOQs. We probably employ 130, 140. In other words, King George County and every county or every school division employs well above what the SOQ predicates. So you see that we, there's a, a local match implied for, not only for the, the non-SOQ positions we hire, so to speak, but also the SOQ positions. There's only enough funding to provide a 5% increase for, for those positions. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, it does. But we are, I guess the bottom line for me is that we are, we are, we are proposing a 5% increase across the board for all staff.
That is correct.
So back, back to what I was getting ready to say before I interrupted Dr. Benson. I'm sure the board of supervisors are going to want to know what the answer to that question is. What, what is, what is the local match for the, that aren't including the SOQ from the state funding?
Okay. And I can certainly estimate typically locally, it's about 40, 45% of the total cost. So it's, it's not hard to estimate. I just didn't want to take an estimated guess. We can certainly calculate that amount fairly closely to the dollar.
Okay. I was looking at the 1,544,111.
Yeah, now that's, keep in mind, that is a, that is the major differences from this current fiscal year to next. Is that figure?
So I have a question about the bus drivers. It doesn't seem that they are getting that 5% increase. And there's, the bus driver salaries increase only 60,000 from 1.248 to 1.258. And then while we're on the buses, just one other additional question is the bus monitor salaries doubled as well. I'm on page 47, page 56.
I can say that we do use, we use a sales spreadsheet. We do change the formula for all employees. So it would have applied to all, to all employees.
So I.
Look at what you're looking at. Tell me again, the bus drivers?
The bus drivers, the bus driver salary. Let me make sure I got the same thing here. It is page 47, bus driver salaries are 1.1,248,184. The first column is the current year. The next column is the next year, correct? Yes. And then so the next one is 1,258,762.
That's just in the salary line, not benefits. Not sure which document.
But the, the math doesn't work even if they compare it to the other ones. And then just the bus monitor salaries have doubled. I think there's just maybe some incorrect math going on there.
Is that the same page, Ms. Panter?
Yes, it is.
It's 40, 46?
47.
Is that in the second draft?
So I think, so.
I don't know, whatever I had here.
So Ms. Panter, I think you're looking at the original draft one that has the comparison between FY20, last, what is it, FY2021 and FY2122, which is where the, you see that the salaries have essentially doubled. But then the change from that FY22 number of 259 to what is in the new draft, which I've seen.
Okay, so look at the bottom. It says 3820, second draft, 5%, page 47 of 56. Is that not the right one?
Yeah, right. So bus monitor salaries, salaries have gone up to 264,000 from 259,000 in draft one.
So this is not the second draft? This is the sheet that I'm looking at.
That's the first draft, correct.
But it says second draft, 5%.
I don't know where you're looking at, the one I.
Bottom of page 47.
That's a summary document Ms. Williams put together. I, I can double check and make sure that two documents are parallel. But this, this document for everybody, the operating fund 250, the one that has the single amount out to the right for 2122, that is the document to, for which the, the calculations are made in this spreadsheet. So that would be the master document. And again, it's, it's the one, Ms. Panter and all board members, the one without the comparison. I'll go back though and I'll check to make sure the comparison document is corrected if that's an error.
So the same numbers, the level, the second column is the same level. I think that's what it's doing. This second set of, of documentation that you gave us is comparing budget 2021 to 2122 budget. It's comparing the two.
Correct.
Both, both documents, I have say at the bottom, the same thing, second draft, 5%, both things I have.
So there's, so there's, so we have three, yeah, there are two, right? So can I, can I see if I can straighten this out for a second? Okay. So in our packet that was in our binder that was originally provided, there is a draft in there. Mine says that, well, this is maybe an order. Either way, it says that the, the FY. I think that's the wrong one. I think that's the right one.
So how about we just say, Dr. Benson, just look at the bus salaries and see what happens?
That is what I'm doing. And what I'm saying is if you compare the old draft with the new draft, they both start at 137, but they go up to different numbers in the current budget. So the, the, so I think there were changes prior to the 5% increase that is what essentially doubled the salaries. And then that final number was increased again in the drafts that we have tonight. And that's why it looks like a discrepancy, but it's probably not.
But in particular, the bus driver. I see what you're looking at, Ms. Panter. So you're looking at the, the increase of $10,000. the increase of ten thousand dollars, a little over ten thousand in one document. Not seeming to equate to a five percent increase in salaries.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
All right.
And I I understand that, you know, the five percent um also includes benefits. Is that not correct, Dr. Benson? So the um the health insurance increase, so they're not going to see the bottom line, the teachers are not going to see a five percent increase.
That that there would be a five percent increase in their compensation, but you are correct that half of the three point seven five health insurance premium, half of that then would would be uh levied on the employees. So so whatever that dollar figure turns out to be for individual employment, you are correct. That would then be a reduction in their their compensation increase.
So it I just want to point out that you can't take the the twenty twenty-one budget number and add five percent and expect to get the exact twenty twenty twenty-one twenty-two budget number. Although it I did go through this pretty well and it it comes pretty dagger and close.
Well, we'll double check that that figure for the twenty-one twenty-two for bus driver salaries and monitors.
Thank you.
Dr. Benson, did you want to continue your presentation?
Yes.
I ordered you.
Sure.
While we're on um talking about the salaries, do you have a specific dollar amount that the budget is increasing just for the salaries? Did I miss that in the packet somewhere?
So when you say just the salaries to exclude any fringe costs, is that what you're asking?
Uh, you can include the fringe cost. So this.
Yep, the the amount that you see at the top, the one point five million is simply derived because the the equipment services and consumables remain the same from graph one and graph two. Um, the cost for the additional staffing needed at the middle school uh has has increased obviously with the with the increase in proposed salaries. Um, so just using simple algebra, that that is the remaining amount in the budget that exceeds our current budget. So it's assumed that all other costs are associated with compensation of employees and the fringe cost for employees. Now, if you wanted just salary, not um FICA, not VRS, those types of things, if you wanted that pulled out, you know, we could deduce, we could, we could get to that number, but we'd have to withdraw those costs and calculate it separately.
I I think that's pretty um, those numbers are all relevant to one another, so.
Okay. Um, just to summarize then, there's been no other change in terms of um additional staffing needed. I did correct the PowerPoint. Um, there was a clerical position left on there that should not have been. I did correct that. Um, in case there's any confusion between the two versions of just PowerPoint. Um, but all other positions remain needed at the middle school and the centralized support as we're summarized last time uh we met. I guess I would then direct you to the last page of the uh of the summary um and point out, and I do this each time to make sure that uh as I started, I explained to our community uh that funding Virginia schools is a partnership between the state, the General Assembly, their portion uh and the locality. And it's designed uh to try to bring some equity so that each locality is providing approximately forty-five percent of the cost of education and the state providing fifty-five percent. Uh, so with that in mind, I'd take you to the last page to show you that at the bottom between fiscal year twenty-one, that's this year. Now, this year is a is an anomaly because as we remember, we um uh we the local effort provided was actually three hundred thousand less than FY twenty. Um, and that was that was certainly understandable, given the unpredictability of where our local economy was headed. Um, with that in mind, you'll see then at the bottom that for this year uh look locally, thirty-seven point nine percent of our budget is being funded locally. As proposed for next year, it would only be an increase of point one percent or thirty-eight percent of our operating budget uh for next year would be, we would rely on through local dollars. Um, so I do think that's good news. It certainly reduces the potential burden that could have been uh requested of our local Board of Supervisors. So I am pleased that the state this year um has stepped up and it has included additional funding to support education. Uh, so with that said, I'm happy to answer any more questions you may have or do any research between now and next Monday. Um, when this again will be on your agenda for action, uh hopefully to then approve so that we um can take you to the Board of Supervisors. That meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, the thirty-first. I spoke with Ms. Cupka today, the um the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, and she asked that I present this. I think there may be other departments presenting that same night. Uh, certainly the school board is is welcome to um attend and support, but it's not, this first presentation would not be in a joint meeting format. Rather, the Board of Supervisors um would entertain a joint meeting in April is what she said, said to me. So those are our next steps. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions or give you a chance to um to review it and then contact me with any clarification I can provide. But I will follow up on the bus driver salaries and find out the answer to the question.
So I asked about about three or four weeks ago, how much end of year money is forecasted?
I I can answer today. Um, Ms. Williams and I sat uh to try to to firm that estimate. Again, please understand I do believe we'll have significant fund balance, which would be funds that were were specified per purpose that we did not incur the expense that we anticipated last year this time when the budget was being developed. Um, I think conservatively, um and again, please understand that there is no, we have half a year to go really in terms of expenses. So forecasting the personnel costs out based on last year's expenses. Uh, we we thought it would be conservative to look at six hundred to eight hundred thousand in fund balance um for this fiscal year twenty-one for the school division's budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Collins, do you want me to calculate the non SOQ? Was the was the explanation going to calculate those?
Well, no, how much that you're going to, the ask will be for the Board of Supervisors under that five percent for the non SOQ.
Okay.
Um, yes.
So any position we have that's not listed as an SOQ-funded position, you want the the amount in aggregate, the five percent amount in aggregate for those positions? The cost for salary, just for salary?
Okay. And um, so we got the second CARES Act money, which was a million some odd thousand bucks. And I'll probably get a third CARE Act money, which will probably dwarf the second one. So I have asked for that list. I would, I want, I I wanted to get the list before the Board of Supervisors meeting, so I could be prepared.
It's it's on the agenda for your twenty-ninth, meeting on the twenty-ninth, who cares to funding? So I'll bring, at that time, I'll bring a list of of proposed expenditures from staff, you realize this thus far, for you to review.
What 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 did you say?
I'll bring a list of what staff has um noted as a need, you know, summer school related, those types of things. Um, to bring, and that what you asked for is the CARES money and what? So just to support that discussion.
I'm afraid we're going to supplement some of that CARES Act money for a budgetary item such as like a technology item, a one-time purchase or something. I have a feeling this is not going to be a a real happy budget time with the Board of Supervisors.
Any further questions?
Yeah. So Dr. Benson, in the FY twenty-one budget, uh we did that um and approved it under the premises that we would be in school a hundred percent as we've been doing forever. And then, of course, we hit this pandemic. And now, you know, things have changed drastically. I would say our instructional model has changed completely. So I'm, I I was kind of anticipating that there'd be a little bit of a significant change within our budget numbers from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. Uh, you know, just the instruction alone, it's, there's only an increase of less than one percent. Um, I I'm pleased to see that the technology has increased a little bit because I think that we are always behind the the wheel on that. I I'm just, I'm not understanding, and maybe you can help me, the transportation, you know, we've increased that, although we did not utilize our bus services nearly as much as we had before. And then the operational and maintenance, you know, here again, that one um has pretty much remained the same. I was anticipating a little bit of of a a change in that because we have not had as much operations and maintenance in our facilities and also the facility numbers. So is there a way that you could explain why there's not a significant change in the numbers in those categories?
Well, really, in all categories, because you're correct, we created the FY twenty budget at a time prior to the to the pandemic. So that that was created assuming we would have a school year much like any other. So just to make sure that that the comparison mo- the comparison numbers I I provided for you only income only are are only reflect that changed by that three hundred thousand that was that was reduced in terms of the funding. Below level funding from the prior year. I want to make sure I understand where you're going from because this this budget is created predicated on, we'll be back you know, to in person. We're going to have very similar costs that we thought we would have you know, February last year when we were creating this draft budget.
So you're stating that this budget is predicated on the fact that we will be in school a hundred percent come August? That's what you just said.
I I don't, I don't think there's any other way to budget.
So.
But does that answer your question as far as why they're they're similar?
I I I, yeah, I mean, that's great. If so, I I just want everybody to understand that you have based your FY twenty-two budget on the fact that we will be back in school a hundred percent. And yet we sit here and we can't even get our kids back in four days a week. And it, and you know, I don't think the CDC, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think come May or June, definitely not in April, they're just going to say, forget about it all, everybody just go back a hundred percent. So, you know, I'm a little concerned that we haven't and maybe the the CARES funding will, you know, make up that that difference, but you know, I would have expected to see something a little bit different. And if that is you know, what you're talking about, then I think that, you know, we need to start talking about that plan and making sure that we're ready for that come August.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Collins.
So um, just for the record, I I agree with the five percent raise, which to make sure and um, Ms. Hawk and I are definitely on an agreement in this that we give it to all employees. I've never been a a fan of the separating employees out for raises. But the question is, is whether we can, we can pay for that. So that's what I'm I'm looking for in all this stuff is how we how we want to pay for it. So, thank you.
Understood.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Hawk?
Um, I I'm sort of caught up in Ms. Panzier's question, trying to understand. I I, what I think I was hearing was questioning why our costs weren't lower this year with no?
No, I I was interested to see, I would expect some would be lower and some would be higher, you know, but they're pretty close, you know, the increase is is pretty um, across the board, so.
Well, that's what was budgeted, not what was necessarily.
So what, I'm sorry, Ms. Collins.
That's correct, but you know, so only having that six or eight hundred um I don't want to use the word the balance, fund balance, you know, that's minimal compared to, you know, what we're seeing here, so.
So your question appeared to me was you asked Dr. Benson, so if this budget reflects that we're going to be back in person in August, and the answer that Dr. Benson said was yes, so I think he an- you asked and he answered.
Ms. Hawk, you want to finish your question?
My question, trying to understand uh whether I was missing something, and I don't think I was. Um, I I I think we're on the same wavelength. Uh, because frankly, we're having to pay all of the expenses, whether children are receiving information virtually or in person, uh other than uh perhaps increased custodial fees. But we're still doing that. We're still having people in our buildings teaching virtually, so life has gone on, school has gone on this entire year. It's not that that we've shut down or really had um any kind of savings there that I could, that I could understand.
Well, I I wouldn't tell Ms. Collins that, I mean.
Ms. Hawk.
A child can't get into school, I would call that a shutdown.
We've had students in the building since.
Right.
But I can clarify related to cost, you know, because we don't have the number of students for the period of time we we had in the building, then the the load on the building as far as utilities. Um, I think someone mentioned transportation, you know, the fuel uh burnt was certainly less than it had been previous years. But I think Ms. and Sarah's point was was that we budgeted this time last year, not knowing we would have that. We're budgeting this year anticipating we will be uh more back to normal, you know, as far as in-person learning. So that's why I estimate the six hundred to eight hundred thousand in fund balance is because we have had unrealized expenditures um related to, you know, the 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 rather lengthy time of virtual or remote learning that we hosted.
Yes. Um, I I, Ms. I have a continuing question out of that. Um, if um we are going to consider uh the proposal for this year of having a hundred percent or having a hundred percent of students back in the classroom, but I guess as many of a hundred percent as soon as we want to come while still offering all students virtual, will there be additional costs to offering both?
Very likely, but remember, I think we've mentioned, you know, that I think the spirit of the CARES funding that's coming to us is to try to help mitigate the increased costs that may be uh related to offering two modalities. You know, I'd certainly like to know as soon as possible um what uh our our families are are interested in in terms of the modality for their child so that we can begin to plan and but and um adjust for those costs. Um, you know, if we offer a virtual option and and my hope would be we'd have relatively few who would uh who would maintain that, we could still accommodate that, but there'd be a cost there. Now, whether that cost would be coverable in terms of staffing, because the numbers are falling out rather nicely where we can dedicate a teacher to teach remotely and still host the vast majority of students in person and the staffing kind of works out nicely. That'd be great, obviously. If it doesn't, then of course there may be a corresponding cost of eleven beyond to facilitate both modalities.
Are you?
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Oliver, any questions?
No.
Um, Dr. Benson, I think I have just a few. So I think maybe in keeping with Doc, uh, Mr. previous comment about um showing the difference for the locality, the required match for the SOQ and non SOQ positions. I was wondering if in um the revenue, the revenue sheets, um, so that's like pages ones that come after the presentation. Um, if it would be helpful for some of these to be broken out similarly, like um, maybe like, I don't know, if a table would be helpful, maybe to to show like some of these, like so standards of quo- the SOQ program funds, so that would be one point. Um, but to show like which which funding streams or which revenue sources, they're also require the local match. So they don't all, but some of them do. So like the incentive program funds, for example, the end of that paragraph says the state share in the lottery funded program is one hundred and eighty-three thousand with a local match of a hundred and eight. Um, some of the other ones don't, let's see. Um, then like the lottery funded one says, the lottery funded programs consist of a combination of programs, some of which require a local match and others that do not require a local match. Um, and then it goes on to say what the local program revenue, state revenue is. I was wondering if it would be helpful to have a table that broke out all the different revenue sources and then included the local map so that when that question is asked, it's easily identifiable?
According to this page one on on the revenues, on the standard for quality, it says the state will provide, well, first you have to compose the exit um index three point seven zero three.
Excuse me, Mr. Collins, could you talk into your mic? I I'm having a hard time hearing you, I can imagine, yeah.
I was reading at the same time. So the state will provide sixty-two point nine seven of the funds necessary to meet the estimated SOQ. So if you have six hundred and five employees and they'll pay for sixty-two percent and then sixty-two percent of the SOQ, and then you have the the staff members on top of that, it becomes a quite a large size local match. That's just a point, not a question.
No, you're absolutely correct. And I think that that actually gets to. No, you're absolutely correct. And I think that, that actually gets to the very heart of the, the criticism that's been lobbied or levied against the local composite index and the reality of, you know, in the past, more so than this current fiscal year, but the reality of, of the, what's called the required local effort. You know, and we know that from past years that, that one hundred percent of school divisions across the state, their local boards of supervisors or city councils, one hundred percent exceed the required local effort for every school division to make things work. That's, we're not unique in that. There's, there's, but in concept, what this, what Mr. Collins referring to, this, the sixty-two point nine percent, seven percent, that's tied to the local composite index, that LCI figure. And when our local composite index is a point three seven, what's that saying, what that is saying or implying, I should say, is that, that our local economy or our local tax base should be robust enough to support at minimum thirty-seven percent of the cost of educating students in our county. So going back to the other sheet, remember our proposal proposes a thirty-eight percent support instead of thirty-seven percent. That's just one percent higher than what the LCI predicates, you know, so I, I, I think that's an important understanding that we have as a community, that this is not simply the school board asking for additional funding. We're asking to support a budget that locally is supported to the tune of thirty-eight percent of the cost in the aggregate. And certainly, you know, I can, to get back to your question, Ms. Gonzalez, we, we could certainly, all of this is, is publicly available in more detailed form at the state, the DOE website under the finance section. You can actually go to the calculations template, which hosts several tables delineating exactly where the revenue from the state is going to be afforded and for which purpose when it is specified. So, you know, that, that could be, you know, I hesitated only because I'm, I'm concerned with the length of such a table. But we could certainly put the link to the calculation sheet in there. That would be, you know, you can put whichever number as far as ADM, or we have the ADM number you can plug in and then it would populate or populate for anybody that wanted to, to get down to that level.
I guess I didn't mean to make it, you know, so that you, a ton of information, but just so to answer questions like that, when we say like, well, which portion of the SOQ, like what's a local match for that? What's a local match for that? So I was just, some of these, like, because, you know, I guess for me, sometimes like you can read it, but if it's in a table, it pops right out at you and you say, oh, there's a local match. Versus having to read it and say, okay, this one is, well, that requires twenty thousand and that and versus like the, um, I just tried to put my finger through my mask. Like the, what is it? The categorical program funds do not require a local match. So even if it was just at a higher level with the ones that are included here, I thought maybe it would just be, just yet another way to, to demonstrate what requires a local match and what does not.
Just for our division.
I was just, I was just talking about it, the SOQ employees. So if you take six hundred and five employees, I don't know the number of SOQs that we are, we get. I don't know how many employees are that, but I can tell you that it's probably, probably, we probably pay for a quarter more at least than, than, than that. So that, the, the six oh, that, that only talked, the, the six to two ninety-seven is just for the SOQ. So then all the SOQ, I mean, all the ones that we pay for would be a one hundred percent.
Correct.
You know what I'm saying? So that number, and so when you look at the personnel number and you look at the number for compensation. So you take that one, one million five hundred forty-four thousand and you start taking some of these numbers off here. You'll see that the, the spread is wide. In other words, the local needs to put in more because the state is not paying for the, what they should be paying. I mean, that's, that's been a problem all along.
For the number of physicians that are in reality needed to make things work. And it's a great point that you make because that's, and, and that's what I was trying to say is that's, that's not just germane to King George County.
Right.
You know, we're not playing for additional teachers or additional physicians. We're simply trying to staff to make the schools run as they need to do. We're no different than any other school division in Virginia. Every school division has well above the number, has, has the, has a number of positions well above what the SOQ would suggest. The equity there is that everybody is shorted, so to speak. Therefore, every locality has the same relative burden to, to make the picture.
They're shorter before they ever go beyond the SOQs.
That's correct. And that's why everybody exceeds the required local effort. You're exactly right.
Dr. Benson and Madam Chair, I, I think we, we need to perhaps clarify that, that an SOQ or a non-SOQ is, is no difference in terms of quality or in necessity of the, of the employee. It, it might be a different title to one employee versus another or a, a, a different skill. It, it's, it, it's different, but equally important. One is not more important than the other.
The, the SOQ is basically made so that all school systems have a, a minimum.
Standard.
Standard.
You're exactly right, Mr. Collins.
King George having the standard and I'm not going to name another county have a different standard. But they still don't, it still doesn't meet the necessary requirements.
And it is absolutely the minimum standard. Thank you, Mr. Collins, for saying that.
Okay, so I guess to, to, to conclude my comment, my question, I guess really your suggestion was more of a presentation piece than the numbers themselves. Anyway, so, and then another question I had, the, on the, on page two of the revenues, the local required effort revenue, thirteen million point one, what is that number? That doesn't, that's different than the presentation.
That is correct. It should be thirteen, three.
Isn't it, isn't it eighteen?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about local required effort revenue?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, that's exactly what I was just speaking to, that, that, that thirteen point one million figure. If you were simply to then calculate what the state recognizes as required local effort, that's what that amount would be. So you see, and again, this is in all cases, you see the difference between what that, when you simply do the, the math, what that amount is versus the eighteen point eight million.
The difference is that point one percent, the difference, that, that essentially the five million different dollar difference essentially between the two, that's the point one percent?
No. Well, yes, I'm sorry.
In total?
Between thirty-seven and thirty-eight.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I want to make sure that that's, it's not as simple as, as that. Because that's, that's not going to be one point one percent. This goes back to the fact that this required local effort is calculated on what Mr. Collins was pointing out, just the SOQ prescribed costs. And since we know the SOQ prescribed costs are well-blowed reality, so too then is this required local effort that's calculated in place.
Right, okay, I understand.
So where, where, King George, the composite index is, is unfairly, you know, we've been arguing this for twenty years from the location where, that we're at. And, you know, we've talked to the general assembly about that change, but it had never occurred that the, the region that we are, that should, that's, that's not even a reasonable index.
I have another question.
Ms. Hawk?
Could you clarify for, for me and the audience? What, were there any changes made at the, at the state level on ADM, the number we use for ADM?
No, we, we maintain the same ADM number.
Okay, so, so regardless of what our, March one or, March one, March fifteen?
It, it's between the fall and the March bound.
Yeah, yeah. Regardless of what that is in terms of attendance, our ADM remains the same?
Yes, in other words, the state has, and this is rather unique to this, this state budget, but the state has, the general assembly did approve, hold harmless, they call it, fund, funding in terms of ADM differences for school divisions next year.
I, I thought that was my understanding of, of the assembly, but I wanted to clarify.
Well, usually ADM, the budget built by Dr. Benson is lower than the, than the board of supervisors will change the ADM. You know, make it higher. And so with the, with the agreement that they'll, if there's a gap, that they would fund it. So they, they could change the, the number for the budgeting if they wished, like they have in the last three years.
I would only caution do, you know, that, that certainly would be their decision, but, you know, the worry with that is that you're, by raising that number, you're basically printing your own money. You don't, you know, that when I say hold harmless, you know, the state is going to base what they, they insure, so to speak, on our, our current ADM. So if it's raised, that's not included in that insurance, so to speak. That could be an unfunded, like my building.
Any additional questions? Dr. Benson?
Yeah, I have some more.
Okay, Ms. Panzier?
Okay, so, um, under the counselor and social worker services. Wow, that's, that's, I printed them off and.
Yeah, I think that's going to be in the budget builder.
So that's page thirty-seven of fifty-six. Yeah, no, I just printed, I, when I printed it off, it just said page one of one.
The numbers are different in the computer.
We have the secondary counselor salaries and the elementary counselor salaries. So we are adding a secondary counselor, correct, for the middle school?
That's a, yeah, that's a SOQ.
Yes, so if you look, that number has not increased by the seventy-some thousand.
Which, tell me again the page, I'm sorry, Ms. Benson.
So it's page thirty-seven of fifty-six. It's a secondary counselor salaries. So from two, I get the, FY twenty to twenty-one, it, it, the number did not increase. It only increased to five percent. So we, we were missing a person in there, that additional increase, unless that second, that counselor for the middle school is somewhere else.
So, well, is it special worker or counselor?
No.
No.
Counselor?
No.
Secondary counselor salaries.
They are different.
I know that, but which, what is she speaking of?
I'm the secondary coun, this, the counselor. We added a counselor for the middle school.
Yeah, that could be a, a difference in projected salary for the new hire, so to speak, or I'll double check and find out why there's a difference.
There's, there's not, that's what I'm saying, there's not a difference. The, the only difference between what, yeah, there's, there's not, from nineteen or twenty to twenty-one, there's no, there's a five percent difference.
So page thirty-seven, there's no, there's no counselors on here?
Okay, but we had a retirement.
So you're saying has the other counselor been added?
Got hired too. Yeah, so some, she, somebody's not included in there. And also, it looks like their elementary counselors. That number doesn't seem to look right either.
You've got more elementary counselors by number than you do.
So that, that brings up a, a whole point. I, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, I, I kind of understand it a little bit, you know, that when we have, we moved the sixth grade to the middle school, I, Dr. Benson, I know that I had asked in the past, so now all of the special teachers that had that extra class, sixth grade class, now does not have that extra sixth grade class. So does that mean their class sizes are going to get smaller or are they going to be taking on additional responsibilities?
No, we'll actually be able to augment the, the specials, the, the periods of time of specials for the other, the kindergarten through fifth grade. So if where they had a, a forty-minute specials each day, we may be able to offer a forty-five, forty-six minute, but include extra time for each segment, I guess, or each section to rotate through for specials. So there's not an off period if that's.
So does that take away from the required instructional time they need for the primary subjects? Where do they get the extra time to add towards specials?
Well, I don't really view it as, as distinct. I mean, it would give them an opportunity to increase the amount of time that they would spend in specials. So if you want to look at it as those five minutes would be coming from, you know, some, from their general classroom, you could view it that way, but I think our teachers view it as an opportunity to actually reinforce key learning concepts in the context of their special class.
But isn't there a required instructional time for the primary subjects? So which are you taking away from?
Taking away?
You have to, if, if you're going to add five minutes instructional time to the specials, you got to take five minutes away from something. We're not adding five minutes to the day.
They're not, they're not exclusive of each other. In other words, there's required in terms of, you know, the school days or that type of thing. If that's what you're talking about.
Specials are instructional time, yes.
I, I understand that they're instructional time, but there's a required specific amount of instructional time that's.
For the day.
Yes, for the day, but for, for specific subjects as well. You know, we have to reach the, the SOLs, informational on the SOL, so I can't imagine that we're going to take an extra five minutes away from English or history or math so that we can put it towards specials. I don't know, maybe we're.
I think your art and your music folks out there would severely disagree.
I'll research it for you.
I'm not trying to degrade them by no means, I, you know, I mean.
I'll be happy to research and find out for you.
Thank you. Okay, so the other one is the special education elementary teachers. I have no idea where that is, mine.
What page?
I don't know. There's a special education section that's follows right after the high school, I believe. So here, here is just a couple of other things. So, so I, I took last year's budget, compared it to the year before and then compared it to this, this year's budget so that I could see, you know, the teachers coming in, the teachers going out, the differences between the two. And one thing that I noticed is that the multiple disabilities teacher salary is a zero. The visually impaired teacher salary is a zero. There's a, a significant increase in the health impaired teachers, significantly decrease in the autism teacher and a significantly decrease in the development delayed teacher salary. So I, I guess my big question is, is if we're taking those out of the special education elementary teachers, I didn't see where they could possibly be, be moving to the secondary. Being that, I know we have that sixth grade moving up to the middle school.
Yes, I, I can, I'll look into it further, but I can tell you that in some cases, it may very well be a teacher that is moving with a student. We may have a teacher who is a one-on-one with a student who has that need and they may be moving to the middle school level, which would obviously create a corresponding decrease here. In some cases, if we have a vacancy, we make contract services. So you may see the costs that are needed to cover those services reflected in contracted services rather than in hiring staff, depending on the level of need from year to year. We sometimes have students who move in or move out and Ms. Bush then will look at the IEPs or the anticipated IEPs for the following year and staff. So that, those could be, I would anticipate finding that those are the factors that are in play and the differences you've seen over the last three years or so.
Okay. So we need to take a break, Mr. Collins?
Mr. Collins?
Okay, so, yeah, I just, I just asked that you might look, I, I just want to make sure that we didn't eliminate a, a position inadvertently and then.
No, I can promise you, we didn't, but I'll, I'll find out for those three.
Okay, I have two more.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, under athletics. So in FY twenty, we had a, a budget of fifteen thousand five hundred for athletic supplies. And then this year it nearly doubled to twenty-eight thousand. Okay, so it was twelve thousand five hundred more. So with, you know, us not really, I mean, we're, weren't able to have participated in our athletics a hundred percent this year. I was just wondering, what is the additional surplus for the athletic supplies?
For FY twenty-one?
Yes, FY twenty-one.
I'll have to find that out.
What page are you on?
What page?
It's.
It's under the high school.
It's on, it's after the high school under athletics.
That's a page at the bottom.
Actually, page twenty-one of fifty-six. And then I, I have one more, and this is on page twenty-three of fifty-six. So each school has textbooks outlined. And then, and this one, the division-wide improvement instruction for FY twenty, we had. FY twenty, we had secondary textbooks at an amount of sixty four thousand eight hundred and ninety four. And this year, we are proposing three hundred and ninety eight thousand two hundred and ten. That seems like a significant increase. I was just kind of curious as to what and why.
Yeah, some textbook, some years, um, as far as what we adopt and what we need to replace. Uh, on a cycle, typically a seven year cycle, when we can afford to replace uh, textbooks. You know, we we do so. So some years, we may replace, um, you know, world languages. Electives, and so the cost may be relatively less than a previous year when we were adopting math or and history or that type of thing. So textbooks is something that, um, it's a little lumpy from year to year, depending on which subject areas you're adopting. You're you're purchasing adoptions for, and the state does allow, um, you know, as far as. The funding afforded for textbooks, they understand that that's kind of the nature of that type of expenditure. You know, so if one year you're a little less than what the allocation is, another year they anticipate you'll be a little high. But over the course of a seven year cycle, you will have replaced or refreshed, I guess, your your textbook needs. Um, and the median cost should be, the average cost then should be um, close to what the funding was as far as provided by the state.
So each school has.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
Depending upon where the board of supervisors, I think that would be an item that you could infuse with that next round of cares money. You know, because of one time expenses, and on sheet, it would fit into that. So you you have to think about what's coming in the future and what what they decide they're gonna fund and not, and then where we could. Uh, plug in that money for um, if it's a one time expense, not not for a budgetary reoccurring item.
I think that that could be correct, as long as we exhaust the money um. Received from the state for that, for the textbook purpose, then I I think you're correct.
So I guess, I carry on to that question, is that every school has a textbook line item. In their general education as well, and that varies anywhere from I have twelve thousand to twenty thousand. So I'm just wondering, why is it in both sections?
Those, that uh, term is used as a as a category of expenditure, but at the local school, you may have supplementary. Uh, materials, um, short novels, in the case of the high school, or paperbacks or um, book needs at the school level. That are needed to supplement the textbook in general, and that's typically what that funding is is for the schools to use. So it's it's simply a portion of funding that the schools then determine that for this grade level, we're gonna be doing this, that, and the other. Therefore, we need this in addition to the textbook, the textbook being more of a reference um, type of book. We need these materials, we need to replace uh, so many books that are now, you know, unusable, that type of thing. So those, that's what that funding is uh, is forwarded to cover at the school level.
They're supplemental books.
Right. Not just books, but resources as well. You know, the the moniker textbooks is more of a general. Cover all for those types of expenditures, but these days, um, those could include other ancillary resources that they use along with. Uh, the textbook, uh, that they then have a budget to use to purchase.
Okay. I believe that's it. Thank you, Dr. Benson.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Ms. Hawk? Ms. Tolliver? Mr. Collins? I don't understand, I guess maybe one, and I know I mentioned this previously, but I know you have the stipends at the back, um, I don't know, maybe it's too late this year, but. I wa- I was interested in seeing uh, them evaluated um, for equitability across the positions based on workload.
What was, I didn't understand that.
So my question, so on the, um, so for the the stipends, I know I asked this previously. You know, so like all of the, say, department chairs in one, like, say, at the elementary or the middle school or the high school, all have the same amount. And I was wondering if that's at the equitable, so for example, I know like this year, the special education department did a lot with like their new IEP system and then reworking a bunch. So just in general, that's just one example. I was wondering, like, you know, if you like, so just on the first page of, um, as an example. The of the stipend section, like Potomac Elementary School, like all, um, you know, all of the. All the stipends are just equal across all of the grades, um, and that's, I know that's the case across many. My question was purely that, um, you know, are the stipends equitable based on the workload? So is like, for example, the special education chair, is that stipend, is there additional workload for being the special education instructional leader? The same as the workload for that of the third grade instructional leader? It was purely to evaluate that um, in comparison to others, and then the same would apply to the athletics stipends and all the others. Just to make sure that they were equitable based on the workload.
For next year?
I think that'd be awfully difficult to measure. I mean, that's.
Some of it wouldn't be too hard to measure as far as, um, you know, uh, department head of English and. Potomac should make the same thing in the stipend as uh, department headed King George Elementary. But when you, it might be a little more difficult when you get into this athletics, what's the value of one or the other, you know? But that would, I mean, you know, if I was a, if I was a, you know, uh, English chair. Down in Potomac and the one in King George made more than me, that that would not, that would not be too cool.
Or if the history chair made more than the English chair, I mean, the equity is, I think, across the board, just chair. I don't I don't know how you would measure that. Without going, getting into the details of saying, well, I'm, I work more than you do. I I don't know, I don't see how that is.
So we've already approved these for this.
Not yet, you've not approved, you need to, um. Next week, you would need to consider approval, but I could certainly offer to look at, um. You know, when I consider your your question, Ms. Gonzalez, I think, I know that a few years ago, we did do a study with with neighboring divisions to make sure that we were. We were close, and we did make some adjustments as far as a division to division comparison. But what I hear you saying is, could we look internally at a comparison between, you know, the department chairpersons? Given that they are all department chairpersons, is there a, um, is there a difference there in terms of. Workload, or is there not? Um, we could certainly do that with that, because that's kind of an internal comparison from one chair to another. The external, um, or the 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 different, the dissimilar positions, I agree with. What Mr. Collins, Ms. Panter are saying, is that that would be a difficult analysis, I think, to do, to kind of. Evaluate workload for those positions, but we could certainly look at a department chair. Um, I haven't seen if there are other academic. That that logic would would apply to.
So I guess, like, so, um, so I guess the department chairs are one like that, as an example, I mean, there are lots of different categories. And then, like, so for the athletics, for example, um, I'm looking at the, this is, I guess, the middle school one. So like the, at the bottom, there's the baseball head coach, track head coach, soccer head coach, softball head coach. And of those four positions, there are three different amounts, so the baseball and the soccer, girls soccer head coach. Get a stipend amount of one amount, the track head coach gets a different amount, the softball head coach gets a different amount. Sure, there are reasons, I was just curious if it had been evaluated based on. You know, wha- what the driving factor was behind some of those, and if any of them could be changed to be more equitable. It was purely a question for consideration. If the answer is no, then that's the answer. Um, I just thought it was worth. Considering to make sure that folks are compensated adequately for the work that they do.
Yeah, for me, the answer would never be no. We could certainly look at it. Um, I I was simply offering, for the sake of timeliness, if you wanted me to bring back something. Uh, as soon as Monday, we could look at the department chairpersons uh, in a timely fashion, then we could do a more comprehensive. Kind of revisit of all the stipends as we did a couple of years ago, and make sure that they're all comparable to neighboring divisions.
Okay, that sounds good.
Madam Chair, may I add a piece to that, that um, comparable to neighboring divisions is appropriate. However, Title Nine um, suggestions and recommendations are probably a more appropriate standard.
Well, they're required, not just appropriate, yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to see our, get our kids equitable first.
I didn't hear what you said.
I'd like to see to get us, I'd like to see us get our kids in an equitable environment first.
All right, any further questions or comments? For Dr. Benson on the budget? So, all right, any further discussion for the evening? I'm asking, in the past, I've been, there have been sentiments that we needed further discussion after discussion, so I'm asking if there's further discussion. If not, say thank you, Dr. Benson, for the budget.
Thank you all for your support and your good questions, um, and your help in developing this, and uh. You know, ultimately, again, your support as we uh, relay this to the board of supervisors.
All right.
I'm sorry, Dr. Benson, what time is the meeting on the thirty first? It's seven.
Thirty first, the Wednesday is is the.
Their work sessions have started early at five, um, but their normal meeting starts at six thirty after the the order authority. But you have to see what time on the thirty first is set for.
I will double check with Mr. Cusinberry and.
Would you and let us know, please. And where they put him on the agenda, where they put us on the agenda, usually were.
It's first.
All right.
Okay, so just to clarify, on Monday is our next meeting, the twenty ninth, and we will be discussing returning the kids to school. Either this year or for next year, in-person learning. And we discussed earlier today.
Correct.
That will be on the budget, or I'm sorry, that would be on the schedule, agenda, whatever.
As well as the bylaws.
As well as the bylaws.
Just as, is there information you need from staff to support that discussion?
Yes.
And if so, what is the information?
My my question is specifically about the provision of virtual. At the same time as in-person opportunities.
So I think that. The high school had, well, they, you know, Dr. Boyd had said, you know, gave us um, the list of schools, I don't know how many were in there, ten or twelve. That said that they do teach concurrently, but yet we're not able to do that, so I believe the biggest stumbling block was block was technology. So having a good understanding of what technology would be needed in order to get to that point might be a good idea.
Please don't bring back these administrators.
No, I I don't think we need to bring them back. I think if, you know.
Well, we're needing information, Mr. Collins.
Well, Dr. Benson is is the employee that gives the information.
And that's fine with me, I just, I just need for the administrators to know that they're certainly welcome to come. I I don't think that's an issue.
I didn't say they weren't welcome, I just said for them to do a whole presentation of the same thing over and over.
Well, it is not the same thing over and over, Mr. Collins. There have been different circumstances at each point in time. We've asked them to return, and we've asked different questions and gotten different information.
So so for the purposes of next week, for Dr. So Dr. Benson can be properly prepared, is the intent to discuss? In-person learning update for the remainder, for the remainder of this year or for the fall?
Both.
Both. And I think what we need to discuss, we need to be able to come and 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 get our documentation together as board members. We can all do research to see, you know, what risk mitigation strategies we've taken, how the CDC. You know, looks towards those risk mitigations, if they take them into account or not, and then what risk mitigations we're willing to accept to. Give a little bit more leniency to the CDC guidelines, because that's what risk mitigation means. Is that we're going to assess risk based on mitigation that we have done, so that we don't have to go by the CDC guidelines to the T. And then I think that we also need to discuss, you know, moving forward, I I hate this word, but I think it's very important that we, as a board. Start to think about what type of surveys that we're going to have and what those surveys look like, because the surveys that we've given in the past have been so vague. And so misconstrued as to the data that we need to come up with some definitive hardcore surveys that we can get. So that we can have a yes, no answer to what our community and our teachers and our students and our our parents are willing to do. Either this year or starting next year.
All surveys do is make people angry.
I understand that, but you know, we we can all sit up here, you know, I've been accused of, I'm in the acutely engaged, which really aggravate me. I don't have family, I don't have friends, close friends that I've known for forty years or whatever, that work in the community. I've gone out to the schools, I've talked to the teachers that I don't even know, I've talked to all of the administrators, I've talked to the nurses, I've talked to the bus drivers. I stopped to talk to the bus drivers that were sitting in the parking lot and asked them how it was going, because I don't know these people. And, you know, all, they want, they have things to say, and we are not capturing what they want. And the only way that we can capture what they want is to have those surveys and not put on there, if you don't reply, we're gonna assume that this is what you want, because that's. Misleading the information.
Well, how else do you?
Ms. Tolliver?
So so I think that this counts, the work that those who put that survey together have done, and I think there's a huge number of the community that do not answer. So how do you um, determine what they want when they don't indicate what they want?
So may I ask, instead of debating the merits of surveys at this, understood, um, I think the we've, we have. Deverged a little bit from the question that was Dr. Benson's of, uh, to prepare for a discussion next week. What information would the board like to support that conversation? So I agree with Doc, Mr. Collins, I would not like us to require the administrators to come again and tell us the same thing they've told us. At previous meetings, so as far as an in-person learning update, what? For the, what specifically is our discussion point? I believe we need to begin discussing the fall. Um, I know we heard that from the administrators as well.
So just, so that's not a bad ideal, but so we just giving up on the rest of this year, we're going back, is that?
I think, yeah.
Ms. Tolliver?
My thoughts on that are that we look at getting the wait waitlist of kids back into school as soon as possible, and I do think the elementary. Administrators are are working on that, but as I said at the last meeting, um, a lot, a lot of time and energy and. Diligent work on the behalf of our building administrators has gone into a plan that we now want to change with six weeks or less left of school. I think that's even more disruptive. I agree that we want kids back in school. Everybody wants kids back in school as much time as we can. Get them in there, but I for one, I'm not willing to assess the risk less than three feet at this point, the CDC guideline, so. We can discuss it again, but I'm not gonna change my position on that until it's changed further by the CDC or the governor or. And and everybody wants kids back in school, but we're still under a state of emergency, we're still under mask mandates in Virginia, and until those things change. I I'm not willing to discuss putting more kids back in school, except for those elementary that. Are doing the best they can, I hope, and maybe Dr. Benson can check on and give us a status on, an update on that next week, um, where we stand with those. Kids who opted for virtual and one go in person, and do we have room to accommodate those kids? But I think on the middle and high school level, um, if more students want to go back, they could. Under fifty percent at the high school chose in person, approximately, a little under fifty percent at the middle school chose in person. So those who want to go are there, um.
There was four hundred today.
Okay, well, I didn't want to debate, those were my.
Could we potentially, could we compromise and next week focus on our discussion on the waitlist, which we discussed earlier? Which I think most of us are, I know I personally am in favor of having that conversation, um, and getting, making sure our K through two students are in fact equitable. For those that are on waitlists, that would be, that is a step, that is a step towards getting more of our students in the buildings. Would that be a happy medium we could agree upon?
I I, Madam Chair.
Ms. Hawk?
I I certainly think that that has to have a priority, that the. The students who are on a waiting list, whose parents want them to return, if uh, we can meet the legal. And the legal recommendations for CDC, uh, and bring those children back. And I have been in classrooms, just to respond to both of you, I've been on buses. I uh, have, I I think each classroom has a different scenario, each school has a different scenario. I have not measured them. I've spoken to the teachers and to the aides, and um. I I think we we do need to get our waitlist children back in. That needs to be done. Um, I do think we need to discuss. Because we have so many unanswered questions about the remainder of this year. Six weeks is six weeks. Is that correct? Is it is, is it six weeks now? It seems like more or less. April twelfth to mid-May, and you got, you also have SOLs in there, so there's a whole nother thing that would have to be, have to be rethought and re-figure it out. But I I think we we need to continue to to discuss. The year until the year is over, I mean, if that makes any sense.
And I think it's important that we understand that the CDC are guidelines, they are not a legal document. And that the governor has said that it is up to the local jurisdiction to make the decision. Not wait for the emergency to be lifted, not wait until the CDC. until the CDC, you know, makes the recommendation, but it is ours, because we have risk mitigations in place that are different than other jurisdictions. And we have other needs than other jurisdictions. And that's why the governor has let the local jurisdictions make those decisions. It's not legal, a legal document or legal requirements that we have to go by what the CDC says, or that the governor has to lift the emergency before we let kids back in school.
I did not say that. And by the way, I had not changed my comment.
Okay, so it's clear that.
It's not a law.
Okay.
You can say.
Okay. All right, folks. Okay.
So Ms. Gonzalez, you said to discuss next year, next meeting also. I agree.
I, I think, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I?
Ms. Hawk?
Trying to follow some kind of rule of order. I, I do think that we, we need to be orderly. I, I think we, we need to answer any question that comes our way regarding the students who are in front of us today for this period of time. We are still in the school year. We need to discuss this. We clearly have begun a budget planning for next fall and perhaps summer school. But I, I do think if we need to get the questions answered for this year next week, and if we have time to just, to begin the planning for next year, that seems like an awful lot of information to present in one meeting.
I agree. So I, so I, I'm stuck. I returned to our, whether it was the last meeting or the meeting before, when the principals were here presenting the follow-on information in accordance with our request after our previous vote. And Ms. Harris specifically said that, that this time of year, considering the number of weeks we have left in the year, that this time of year is when they start planning for the following year. So to me, while perhaps we cannot all agree on what is, well, we probably can, we could probably all agree that an ideal situation right now would be everybody back in school. I think we can all agree that on, that's not where we are. That's not the state of our lives at this moment, so that is what it is. But to continue incrementally rehashing the discussion and expecting more information about how we could maybe change our last few weeks of this year, ultimately takes away from our long-term objective of getting everyone back when the time is right, which it seems like perhaps is the fall, perhaps, because we have this big thing called summer break in the middle, and what the summer, what the summer looks like. So I worry that if we continue the conversation of how we're going to make little changes to the end of this year, with the little remaining time we have left, we are shortchanging ourselves in the big picture, because we're taking away from that critical planning time that should be used to plan the next step for the, the whole, the big picture, not just the remainder of this year.
We just need to come up with a plan. We need, and whether that plan is implemented April 12th, April 19th, you know, May 1st, August, whatever, we just need to come up with a plan. And we need to start there.
We have a plan.
We need to come up with a plan to get more kids back in school.
Okay, understood. Okay, so may I ask, so Dr.? Okay, thank you, Ms. Panzera. So, Dr. Benson, could I ask, when, so for, for, hold on. So for the fall, we know, we're thinking about it, we have a budget that is planned for, you know, the ideal situation with all of our students back in the building. When do you think, based on information that you have from the state and the state superintendent and all these sorts of things, when do you think would be an appropriate time to, for us, for you to bring to us the preliminary plans and steps and things that have been considered or would start to be considered for the fall?
And summer school.
And summer school, correct?
That's a whole different ball.
Summer school, let me leave that.
I think we need to define.
Hold on, Ms. Panzera, let Dr. Benson answer the question.
So I know that we've already established a summer school proposal, you know, working collaboratively with schools, and we're looking at each site, that type of thing. We've already projected costs. Those costs are going to come to you in the form of that CARES 2 agenda item next, next time. As far as, and I want to make sure I understand, so just as a general outlook or a, you know, a general aim in terms of what next year would, would offer in terms of learning modality? I mean, that's, that's simply a statement I could make. I don't know what other, if you want to plan, we obviously would need to then collect data in terms of the choice of families, how many we have in each category, that type of thing, so that we could then know what we have the capacity to do staffing wants. And can I go back one, one quick step? Because to support your discussion about the waiting list, keep in mind, there was no hard stop. 15 was a general number the elementary principals used, because that seemed like a median number. Given the varied sizes of classrooms, we may have represented across schools, but they've not. Elementary schools, principals, I've told them that to the extent they accommodate students, they do so to the max. And that if we have to place a student on cue, then we have to do that because the space simply won't hold an additional child in that classroom. But I know that in some cases, they've certainly exceeded 15, where they felt like they could still maintain three-foot distancing to the extent possible. So all that to say, I want to come back to, this really comes down to, we could eliminate any queuing at the elementary, and that's really where the issue for this year exists. Everybody who has requested or wanted in-person learning at the middle and high school has been accommodated. There is no queue at the middle or the high school. And to my knowledge, you know, depending on, you know, unless everybody came out of the woodwork, I wouldn't anticipate there being a queue at the seventh through 12th grade levels. The elementary is simply where, you know, distancing and distancing only is the variable that if relaxed, could allow more students in, you know? And again, to our public, we had speakers talk tonight, because I would too, if I thought that we were maintaining six-foot distancing in our initial entry of elementary students, and now the CDC has come out with three feet, well, that would logically then predicate more, more seat space. But remember, our plans never, at the elementary level, never incorporated. We always said that we were three feet with masks. We tried from the very beginning to maximize the numbers of kids we could get in classrooms, and we still do as far as the queues. You know, those queues are not static. Those students, as soon as there is an opening, as soon as there is, is space that we can provide for those students, it is used. And those students are contacted and they come to school. So all that to say, I just want to make sure that next meeting, we don't sit and look at each other. The question to be answered is, if you, if you would like the waitlist or that regulation to be amended or deleted, certainly the board could do that. It just means that we would then have the ability to bring more kids in and promise distancing to, to the, to the degree possible, but it wouldn't specify a three foot. That's all. It would just simply say, we will space or we will distance students to the degree possible, but it would not then guarantee any kind of three foot with, or three foot distancing. We would still require masks, I presume, unless this board asks that be changed.
So Dr. Benson, I, with all that said, I've been to the schools. There, if you just stayed with the three foot right now, the waiting list could be gone, because there is room there. No, no, there's no, there's no, no desk where there is space for desks. So that would. So the fact of the fact is, the matter is, is that you can get these students in here.
I guess all I would say is that perhaps in that classroom, there's, there's not a queue student using that grade level. There could be any number of reasons why what you saw may be what you saw. I can only say this, is that my directive to the principals, the elementary principal, all principals, was to the, to the extent we can, we can accommodate students, accommodate them with fidelity to the three feet with masks, because that is what we promised our community. So there may be a classroom at Sealsom where the classrooms may be larger in size, that may have 17, 18 students in it. There may be a classroom that you saw where there's an empty desk, but, you know.
There was not an empty desk.
At that grade level for that school, there may not be any students on that queue.
I asked about that, the grade level. What grade level is this? What grade level is that? To see if there is room in every single grade level, and there are. So I'm not going to argue the point anymore. I'm just telling you what I've observed.
Then my principals have not done, in that case, they've not done what I've asked them to do, if there are students on that queue. And so I can offline get that school from you, and I'll go check that out.
Dr. Benson, have you been in every single classroom at the elementary level? Maybe we need to conquer and divide and do that. I don't know. But the one thing I would like to see, is there any way that you could possibly, that you could possibly find out from our surrounding jurisdictions? Because I know that you talk to the other superintendents on an often basis. So, you know, I think there's three things. One is, you know, I don't understand how we have to hire so many more teachers. There's no way, there's not enough teachers out there. How many extra teachers have they had to hire in order to accommodate the four day? Or even the same hybrid that we're doing? You know, how, are they maintaining the three feet throughout? And then there was a third one that I can't remember at the top of my. No, the, well, the virtual is.
Well, they may have.
Obviously, we're going to maintain the virtual. We're always going to, the virtual is going to be here for the next school year. There's no doubt about that.
That, I mean, that has to be taught by a person. Maybe they have different situations in surrounding jurisdictions.
Well, then find out what those situations are. I mean, I don't understand.
Okay, okay, ladies.
You know, we are, you know, Spotsy is, is six times, eight times the size of us. So if we needed to hire 11 additional teachers in order to do what we wanted for K through three, that means they would have had to hire 66 additional teachers? I can't imagine there's that many teachers out there. I don't know.
Okay. So, all right, so back to the conversation. So next week, we will discuss the waitlist and how we manage that for, it sounds like K through two. And it sounds like we're also going to be getting an update on the CARES funding, which will, based on an earlier conversation, start part of the, it sounds like that will address some of the planning for things like summer school and that sort of thing. So all of that, to me, sounds like we are going, we will be discussing and getting some updates on how we're moving forward. So, does that suffice?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, there, you're always welcome to make additional requests to the agenda before the agenda is set. So if anyone sleeps on it and that changes, please let us know. At this time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are adjourned.